I don't know, I have to go out.
We can include in that help whatever you folks think needs to be in it. I guess I'll jump on down to the jail utility easement that came up. But we're still negotiating for the jail utility easement. On the south side of the road out here in front of Indiana Packers and everything central has been rejected. It doesn't surprise me. Back years ago when I was in economic development, we had an industry was very interested in that spot to build on. And they had no interest in talking to anybody about anything. And they're ancient, they're old, and I don't know, they're just gonna take it with them to grave, I guess, everything, so. But it came up that we still have money that's gonna go out there and we need to have it. We need to have you in back of it to know that we can actually spend the money. However, I think that we should ask, Josh can help out with this a lot. I think we need to ask the Tiff district to participate in that. Because that line down through there will be good for the future for no matter what all comes in out there. I mean, we're gonna put it inadequate for, well, I don't know if we're gonna put it inadequate for any industry to come in, but we're gonna put it inadequate for hopefully industries that would eventually come in on the south side. Because that's gonna break loose one of these days. That's gonna be, it's gonna be a growth area there industrial-wise for the county. And so I don't know that right now, we're wanting to say, will you put up this money? Because I also want to talk to the Tiff district and find out if they'll put money towards it. I want us to all be on the same page of thinking about it, because we've got this expense coming up here. We may have to go to court to get it right.
What's the difference between your offer and the counter offer?
Well, we originally offered 2022, I think it was, no. And we've raised it up to 32, no. So it's this. I mean, we base it on the appraisals that we had. So at this point, we're at a spot of where I think we're never in my time where we ever am going to make anything. And I don't like to do that. But if we're gonna go ahead with any development out there, we're gonna have to take some action on this. And if we do that, then we'll have to, you know, go to court, we'll have to have two appraisers do it, and the judge will set what the amount is, we would think of that easily. They, they don't want, as it's drawn, there are man, manholes going down. Certain manholes down through there, so you can service the sewer and everything. And they don't want any of that to be ground level, they want it all buried deep enough that you can plow over the top of it. Well, that doesn't work.
Well, that's really deep, isn't it? I mean, that would be deep, deep.
Yeah. A very clumsy situation to get into. And what it basically comes down to is, they don't want anything touching any inch of their property.
So, I mean, how far out from the, I mean, is it in the ditch, is it out in the field, or like?
Well, it's out in the field just a little bit. I wish I could remember how far it is out there, but yeah, it's out, it's out in the field. It's gonna pick up, I'm thinking it was close to, close to an acre and a half to two acres down here. Which didn't, didn't mean that they couldn't, it'd be unhandy to plow around these things down here, you know, plant. But it can be done. It, this is part of rural.
So, I mean, are you asking for an appropriation, or are you just making us aware?
I'm just, I'm just wanting you to be aware that we've got this probably thirty-five, forty thousand dollars that's gonna be coming.
Is, is that field included in Tiff district?
It is.
I think that's a perfect, in my opinion.
Well, and so, I mean, to your first point, I think it is, and Jake is here from the EDC. And he can speak to, there is an engineered plan for that parcel today. And I don't know what the detail is, but I know that it's been presented to the RDC in the past by the engineering firms. Is there anything you'd like to say about it, Jake?
No, there isn't, I guess, pre-site work's done to get infrastructure for that location. And it had been identified as the Hoosier Heartland, and the commission ground has been a part of that as, as an area for development. So anytime that we can get, as economic developers, get infrastructure in the ground pre-existing, it makes our bid to attract business that much easier. So it's a question I don't have to ask afterwards, we can already have it in advance. So I would support that notion.
Thank you. So yeah, I concur with your assessment. I mean, the, and I did talk to HWC Engineering about that site. And nearly the, all, almost all of the infrastructure that is needed to go for the jail project, they would have had to install for an industrial site there. So I concur that the interests align. It may, maybe the timing might not be perfect. But in terms of a long-term vision for the economic impact of that area, I think you're exactly right. There, it should be, like I said, not perfect timing, but I think it's in the RDC's long-term interest.
The only thing that that site is sure of to be a, is a darn near perfect site is real. You know, there are industries that want to be on rail and, and, but other than that, it's fantastic site. One other thing I'd like to bring up to you, and it's to you to handle how we use C-FIT. We have been approached by employees concerning sick pay. And there are a lot of places that now are allowing you to get a payout of sick pay. In other words, if you don't take all of your, all of your days off at such time as you retire, or whatever we jointly set as the criteria for when you, and when you're vested in this, you can get a payout, pay it back for the ones you didn't take. Now, what has found, been found a lot of times, of course, is that if you have an interest in saving that money for retirement or something like that, you're much more likely not to just take off for every sniffle of everything you have, and you're gonna show up for work, and that creates a better situation for us as far as not having people gone all the time. I don't know how Lauren feels about it, exactly listened to it. Both Steve and I were, I think, favorably impressed with the idea that there should be some type of a, of a pay for days that you do not take. Now, the problem is, this can be a unfunded mandate building up on us. If we just say, sure, we're gonna pay you so much a day, and like that, well, yeah, well, when it comes on pay, where's it coming out of, and how much we got to be owed for, and how many employees? We don't have that many employees right now that are looking at being able to retire. But I think the criteria should be that they have to be here a number of years before they get this, which would be another encouragement to stay, because we have an awful turnover.
So is, do you have a proposal, or are you just opening it for?
I do not have a proposal, I just wanted to make sure that you two have been, had come to us, and that we were thinking about, is this a good thing or not?
Do you have any idea what the total liability right now would be?
Well, we got about three people who would be retired before too long. That looks a number that's thrown out in here.
I'm starting to think it's on right now that I just don't know.
Or be a limit of days.
That's right, we've set any limit of what we want. You can get paid for this many days, or you could get paid for all the days you've saved up, or you could get, how do we wanna set it? I mean, it's our program, it could be a benefit program for our employees. And it could be something that I think is an encouragement to stay and, and stay on with us here.
And.
Yeah. So anyway, that's, that's where we are.
They can cap up to ninety days, and then, what he was talking about, what they talked about at the conference meeting, was maybe have a cap of like, you had to work here ten years, because you're best when you're invested. And then that would be so many, you know, if you were here twenty-five years, you'd get so many. It wasn't everybody getting the same.
Right.
Some sort of best-in-schedule.
So if you were here for a year, did you get any sick pay?
No, no.
Didn't use any sick days, you wouldn't even get paid out?
No, that wasn't the plan at all. It definitely started, as Beth says, with the concept of, like the state, when you appear ten, ten years in government, then you are vested and you have a retirement program. And that's where we thought the threshold should begin. And if you wanted to make them higher, somebody who's retiring after twenty-five years or twenty years here, or then they could have a, maybe a higher amount that they got paid out for the sick days. I don't know how many there are, it's gonna take us going through quite a bit of, looking in there to figure out how many sick days are saved up.
What, what made them start thinking about that there is somebody who's gonna retire at the end of the summer or whatever, and he has a lot of sick time, and he doesn't think it's fair he has to lose if he's a dedicated employee?
Shows up every day, he's always there, has for, I think around thirteen years.
That'd be a pretty good idea, if you're working like that. It's just another work.
Is there a motion?
My thought was, if I had some support on it, I could go ahead and look at it and try to figure out how much this would really cost us, and how many days we've got out there, and how many people are getting close to this threshold. And so, we come to you with numbers, but.
Moving to the future, I don't think we can ever pinpoint the number, because once you put on a program.
You would hope it.
Well, that's not funded by the state law, so it needs, like, that, it needs to be budgeted for.
Well, that's what I mean, once they get the program, then it would be certainly a good idea.
But we need to, I know what it is, we can't make, I mean, you can do whatever you want with it. Like, if you make the program and don't know what it's gonna cost, or have any idea how many days it is currently, or what that future liability will be.
The scenario is too, so if you retire, or if you resign, or, you know. That's what I mean, it's gonna be that again for you, where you, the resigning part is harder than the retiring part, I guess.
And of course, if you, if you are dismissed. Thank you. I would, though, encourage you to act upon the, on Kelsey. Because we don't know if we're gonna have an engineer there or not. We're offering it, we're offering it for ninety-seven thousand, you appropriated, so I hopefully, let's.
What, what's the suggested action?
Well, my suggestion is three dollars, you know.
Should they bring a new job description to us?
We're gonna make a new job description.
If engineer, does it's gonna be a licensed engineer?
We, okay, we have two, two applicants that we interviewed. One was a local guy, who seemed like he'd be terrific. He is an engineer, has been for twenty-seven years, but he's not a PE, he's not a professional engineer. And the other one is. And there's very little advantage to us to have an engineer that is not a licensed engineer. For doing things, for staying and getting things through, and, you know, Paul did so much with us with helping with the ambulance garages and everything, where we had to have either an architect or a PE assign off on it, and he didn't. He took care of all that. And we made that clear to the gentleman that we've interviewed, that there will be things like that that are outside of highway that we will expect him to help the county out on. And he said, that'd be fine. Now, I'm hoping that we get, somehow it seems like the three time they come in and interview, and we offer them a job, sometimes they run out the door, so I don't know what we're doing wrong.
Does the state give us twenty-five thousand dollars a year if he is a PE?
We get forty now.
You get forty?
Forty to the PE, and that enters into it a great deal, too, because we can't, the gentleman who was, who was an engineer but not a PE, was, he's making close to ninety-seven now. And he wasn't willing to take less than that, but we would lose forty thousand dollars on him. And it just didn't make financial sense to us to, to figure that out. Thank you.
So how does that work with Kelsey's, they bring the job description and then?
Well, I mean, there's a number of things that could happen. You know, last time the vote, the motion to increase her pay did not pass, because, I'm not gonna say why, but there wasn't, there wasn't support for just giving her pay increase in the end.
I'd like to make a motion to give her the upgraded position. You can do it. Why didn't you vote on the last time?
The vote last time was just for giving her pay.
I'd like to make a motion to give her the pay increase, and why does the upcoming position come in and do it for three dollars a month?
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Ryder, was that a second, Ethan? Okay, I have a second by Ethan Brown. Paul, you're saying ending a job description?
No, I'd like to go ahead and do it now, because permission to talk to her about it increased a month ago.
So, okay, so we're gonna change.
It's only right to do, to do what we've talked about with her. Well, it's not, in my opinion, it's not a need. Well, they're working on the, but I, I think.
We got a lot of questions.
We can't go back and rent her pay, so I think we ought to make the, make the move to, to go ahead and increase her pay. You know, because we can't go back and.
Okay, so we're gonna increase her pay for the job she does right now. Then when we get a new job description, what are we gonna do? We're gonna change the salary ordinance now, and then two months from now, she's gonna say, well, I got a new job now. I'm a new classification, I have new responsibilities, so what are you gonna pay me?
We're gonna.
I answer that a little bit here. I don't wanna dominate your meeting, but, but the, she's already doing the job. We've already tasked her with, with those things, with, and she's already got the certification. And knowing Kelsey, she is not gonna come back now and say, okay, now I gotta do a job description, pay me more. But she realizes that this is the pay that we're talking about now.
So she will continue to do this job even if you hire a PE or not? This is going to be her new job?
I'm sorry.
This is going to be her new job, once you do the job description? She will keep this position whether you hire a PE or whether you can.
I think it'd be very valuable for us to have somebody that can do this. Because I don't know if this PE, PE will be here for a month, or be here for a year, or, I, I don't know.
I was just asking, because that was one of the questions we had last month, was, is this gonna be a temporary? Or is this gonna be just until you get?
And that's my motion, to make it permanent.
Your motion is rejected.
The PE doesn't write the grant. Maybe a PE, but he doesn't write the grant.
Well, most of it is. I thought Paul wrote a lot more on it than he did. And when, when we really got into it this time, I, I was amazed, because Kelsey's already been doing it. She's been writing, you know, for him, and, yeah, he'd be, he'd go through it and check it and do those things. But the, the biggest part of the grunt work and the effort and the labor and all that, she was already doing. And, and she wasn't certified at that time to go ahead and sign him and everything, he had to take Paul to sign him. But now she is, she can go ahead and sign the submissions to him.
So, just, just from a policy perspective, to the motion on the floor to increase the pay, we have a, we have a new engineer coming theoretically, we have an offer out to an engineer that we hope comes. We, we're asking for a midterm pay change without a job description change, which is highly unorthodox for this body. And I understand that the circumstances are odd, but the circumstances have been odd for the last year with COVID. And it's just been a real challenge across the board. You know, I, I, I don't think anything's changed since the last meeting in terms of our, our vote at that time. So, you know, I, I don't see any other issue that, I mean, nothing materially, materially changed from my perspective.
I'd be there as far as the job description, but she probably, she's been doing it for it anyhow, she was doing it outside the job description. And I'd be against waiting for the very bottom of the call, because Kelsey is doing it all.
Well, and we have a new, a new department head coming in here, and we don't know what his vision for his own department will be, and we're changing policy ahead of all of that, and pay scale, and we don't know what his priorities are, or.
I guess, I guess I would like.
The new department head.
I would like to see the job description of the engineer that is expected of them, and her new position, what is expected of her. But I'd like to see it quickly, because she is very deserving of more.
So the job description has been made, it's just not delivered, it's not approved by you?
Ted was working on that, I, you know, I know it's not Ted, I'm like that.
Okay, so it's still a bit, okay. Ethan, I'm sorry, it's been chatting in here, or talking, can you hear?
Are you saying you can hear me?
Yeah, I'm gonna turn it up all the way, but I don't think anybody will be able to hear you, so I may have to translate for you.
I'd like to keep my, my second motion there. My relation is very concerned with the pay increase. She's taking the county thousands of dollars from me to get a raise for us now. I'm very sorry for what I was doing, those audio events last evening. We had a baby of women up there, and they weren't labor, but kind of, last evening, I was gonna put it for her a bit, and she would've gotten the pay increase then, so it would be a three to three time. So today, I'm just gonna, you guys vote for me.
Okay, thank you. Did you guys hear that, I'm sorry. Okay, so is there any other discussion on the floor for the, for the motion to approve a three-dollar increase for, for Kelsey effective, I assume, today, or like?
It's certainly possible, yeah.
Well, I mean, just from a payroll perspective, what would the cycle look like?
Well, since it's in the middle of the day, and we're just gonna start tomorrow, I, that is not everything.
Well, I'm just, from an easy, anyway, so effective today, I guess.
Or if it started today, and she's been there since six-thirty, I think, eight, nine, six, seven, seven thirty, seven thirty.
Okay, is there any other discussion regarding the motion on the floor for a three-dollar pay increase effective today for Kelsey? Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
I have three ayes, nay? And four in opposition, so the motion fails three-four. I have Ryder Brown. Is there, is there any other business to come before the council today?
Wait, since Julia is here now, you re-do it, and not have to take the next year?
Hey, Ethan, can you mute on your end, and then, it's just got a lot of background noise, thank you. Julia, we had some questions about the, the mechanics of the fifty, excuse me, forty-five thousand, and then the requests from the government communities, and how that grant-making work, I say grant-making, it looks like. We got, the word grant got used in too many different contexts, and this morning it got a little jumbled up, so if you can provide some clarity around that, that'd be great.
So the initial, the first request for forty-five thousand had inside of it built a fifteen thousand dollar marketing and tourism grant opportunity. And so that would be administered strictly from the chamber, where nonprofit organizations or tourism-related businesses could apply. And that would include the Delphi Chamber, that would include Burlington Community Club, any of those organizations that have events and that bring visitors to the community. We would establish a committee that would be independent of just the chamber. You know, we don't want the chamber making the sole decisions. We have a representative for review, a representative from the council, a couple of board members. So we would look to create a committee that would be non-biased, if you will, to try and review those applications. So that was the new component, was that fifteen thousand within the forty-five. And that would be one of our, we work with the contractor commissioners for services to leave a tourism and marketing organization, and that would fall under that. So that's what that fifteen thousand is. And what was the other question?
That was, I think, the biggest.
The biggest questions, okay.
Yeah, both, both, both the forty-five and the thirty-five were approved in the motion earlier.
Okay.
The, the question was whether these, the three thousand for Burlington and three thousand for Delphi would be considered within that fifteen thousand.
They certainly can be, yeah, I mean, or you could leave it at fifteen, and that's even more money that we could disperse to organizations needing that. Either way, they would qualify.
That's where I was going, I guess my question here was, I would, I would rather see the fifteen thousand left for you to say you, I'm gonna go to a business owner here, you did billboards for us, and, and put businesses in that. Because, say we have three people asking for three thousand dollars each, what are you gonna do when it opens up, and you've got six people, and then your fifteen thousand's gone, and you're gonna have, you're gonna have to tell someone, no. And then they're gonna come back to the commissioners and us anyway. That was my thing, I would rather see her use that for business advertising or whatever else, and that the nonprofits still come to the commissioners and council. That was what I was trying to get at.
Yeah, I mean, that's just continuing to struggle, and there's no motion on the floor, so I'm stuck. They, we haven't motioned, but the.
Other question, Julia.
Well, I mean, well, but, yeah, there's, we're, counting the dollars being used for specific municipalities that receive edit promotion events within those communities is still trouble. So, I.
It's economic development, is it?
That they raise an economic, they receive an economic impact. And that city of Delphi sits on hundreds of thousands of dollars, even hundreds of thousands of dollars, that they can promote these communities. And Burlington has, they're on their credit, not Burlington, it's on their credit. That's, because they put all of them.
Well, and also you have the constraints of timing, too. I mean, you know, once a year you do it, and talk about it, you have to get approval, and that process obviously takes several months at some point in time. So if there's organizations that need it quicker, I mean, this would be a way to cut the red tape and allow a local committee, you know, maybe work on your behalf to get those.
But then again, the problem is, is when she's out of money to do that.
Right.
They're gonna come to us, and you're gonna tell them, no, because that goes through the charade chamber. And I don't think that's right.
Well, maybe we can redirect them.
Well, I'm just saying, I can hear that being said.
Well, we tell people that all the time.
Yes, you're not, do you understand what I'm saying?
We've declined edit budgets from municipalities in the past, that's why.
The people that get to her first and get the money first, and then say you have a couple of the others that are gonna do out-of-town advertising or signage or something, and they want, you're gonna say, no, but.
Ideally, we would have a time frame, too. I mean, it's not gonna be available all year long, ideally, it would be, you have from, say, March to June. You know, because by then, you know what you're doing, you know, I mean, I've advertised all the events, and say, tour guide for the whole year. I mean, so, I mean, ideally, you already know, I think, what you're gonna need, and so perhaps maybe the grant deadline would be smaller. Time frame, that would be the only thing, but you're right, fifteen, it's gonna go quick, and then you're gonna come back and ask for more.
And it very well may go quick, but could be not, at that point, redirect them, you're local, municipal, at that time.
You can, you can push them anywhere you want.
So before we have to contemplate more at what it's gonna be, how we can redirect them.
Suggests they go to a little of the communities for.
And I would think that would be a good way.
Yeah, it brings visitors to the community, yes, and a little of it.
I just wanna support with what you're saying, Tracy, the, just two thousand nineteen, the state of Indiana went to the Indiana tourism destination development, and they basically made their tourism a public-private partnership. So any entity could go to the general assembly and ask for money, just like they could with this body. However, they've now partnered and made a private corporation out of their tourism department. However, they've now partnered, they made a private corporation out of their tourism department, so the agencies could tap into those public dollars. And then when they're out or when there's additional appropriations, then they essentially go to that corporation, and that corporation lobbies on behalf of those entities back to the general assembly to get more funds, because those are the needs. So I think this is a similar model in which the, the, the companies trusted Julia to be able to use these funds, um, to support them. And if there is a more need, then Julia will be back, and we'll be back to support these local businesses, um, to get more added dollars, so that we can show the community's investment and, and their growth. So it, it, it's, the model is somewhat new, and you have a great point, but the state of Indiana has now changed that to where they've committed to the, uh, the destination development corporation and using those dollars.
You said the keywords, but I'll be back down. Sorry, I just wanna point that out. Yeah, and if we were, you know, like Tropicana County that has lots of hotels, you know, making a lot in innkeeper's money, that's where their funding comes from, is the innkeeper's tax. But, you know, until someday Jake and I bring a hotel to Carroll County, it's gonna be, you know, a little while before we got enough funding. Working on, it's a challenge, we're working on it. And anyway, that's, that's that portion of the forty-five, but it's different than we've ever done before. But we were able to do it last year because there was nothing going on, you know, so we had surplus funds, and like, what do we do with it? And we discovered so many organizations who needed it to, to promote themselves and to promote their businesses with marketing. So I've done all the follow-up, you know, now getting those, uh, grant reports, wanting to know how they use the funds and if they did what they said they were supposed to. So I mean, we're not just giving them the, yeah, we are following up with them to make sure they did what they said.
So in that vein, is it possible to get reports in terms of like outcomes?
Yes, absolutely.
Um, I think that would be a really, really good piece of data for us to see about what the ROI looks like on those and what, what the outcomes work with the dollars.
Yeah, that's, that's part of my follow-up application.
What, what breakdown, what percentage breakdown would you place between tourism, events, special events, and business?
It's a great question. Uh, we haven't considered what that breakdown will look like. I think we wanna know what the need is first, but I know we have to have some guideline. You know, what we did last year, we basically said seven hundred fifty dollars is your max, and as long as you're going to use those funds outside of Carroll County to bring people here, then we pretty much approved everything that we got. Um, and that was people enhancing their websites. That was somebody using, doing radio ads. That was printing a new brochure that needed to get dispersed outside. So it was, it was a wide use. And the Burlington Fall Festival, we gave some funding to do radio advertising for the event, so. Some of those things are hard to track success, but if you went to the Fall Festival, you saw a lot more people than we ever had.
I like the fall festival.
Yeah, it was a great event, so we're looking at expanding.
So when I see here and I look at these amounts, like, um, do they, like, they bring, do you set amounts that they can ask for, or?
We did last year, because we knew how much we had, you know, and we thought, okay, what's the maximum we could get the most benefit out of, and last year we just said seven fifty. You know, but that was just because it was something new. We wanted to see what we could afford.
Because like, that's not near what these organizations are asking for.
Right, yeah. No, but then again, I'm asking for fifteen, so that would be, you know, it's almost double what we did last year.
So a lot of the organizations do like a year in advance, so most of them know ahead of time when their days are going to be.
Exactly.
And obviously this year is still a little itty, but that was my question, like, when, when you open up the, you said you just do it, you're gonna do it once a year?
I would do it once a year and maybe give it about a three-month timeframe, because there are people still waiting to see what happens with their capacities this year. You know, this year is gonna be a challenge again. But I would say if you don't know by the end of June what you're gonna be able to do, I would hope you know by the end of June, because you know, old settlers are begging festivals and fall festivals and.
I can have to know like.
I know, but my suggestion is, can we discuss or do you want to motion?
Yeah, I would prefer a motion.
I would make a motion that this year we still go ahead and approve these two and let her still go on with the fifteen thousand and see what she gets in this year, since it is a different year, and hopefully, hopefully slow them down and all of these local parties. And then she gets us her numbers that she tracks this year, and then.
Important orders, except that the motion has already been, if an activity has already been tabled, will the next meeting, you know, another motion?
We could always do a motion on table and, 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 uh, then a new motion. I think that would make things more clear for the record.
Motion to untable.
I have a motion to untable, uh, the Burlington Community Club and Delphi Greater Lunch at Summer, or, excuse me, Delphi Greater Chamber of Commerce. So I have a motion by Scott Ayers to untable, and it's seconded by Ethan Brown. Is there any discussion on the motion to untable? All right, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Can we do that one more time?
Aye.
Yeah. Or oppose, aye? All right, so then, all right, so the, the motion is back on the table, or, or?
Think that was.
Business is back on the table.
New motion, maybe.
A new motion.
If we're able to clarify it once again.
Yeah.
You wanna do both at once, or are you doing this single?
Just, it's your prerogative.
So I would make a motion that we go over the topic of the three thousand dollars for the Burlington Community Club and, uh, I can't make that motion because I'm on the board, sorry.
So you withdraw your motion?
Yeah, I do.
Three thousand for Burlington and Delphi? All right, now a motion by Ethan Brown. Are you abstaining then?
Burlington is the one I have to down, five thousand.
Now, both of them are going down.
Seconded by Paul Ryder. So the motion on the floor is for three thousand dollars to Delphi and Burlington from Delphi. Does Burlington Community Club greater, Delphi greater Chamber of Commerce? And Tracy is abstaining. Okay, is there any further discussion?
President Blue, that's three thousand for each, just.
Three thousand for each, yes. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, oppose, aye? Motion carries forward to, uh, suspension by Tracy Martin, make or blue. Okay, yeah, hey, God bless you, good luck. All right, is there any other business for the council today? All right, see, that, I was, I was saying a motion with your, a motion with Chris Martin. Seconded by Duncan. All those in favor, aye?
President Blue, I think it's also appropriate to clarify that Councilman Ryder appeared telephonically initially, and he appeared in person, and then, uh, Council, Council of Brown appeared telephonically later on.
Thank you.